Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order because everybody's here and it's five o'clock. How the agenda, I need a motion to approve the agenda or else. Comments about changes that need to be made?
Seconded.
All in favor? No public discussion, I guess. So, we are on to. Item four A, which is Ellsworth.
Lots of information in this packet about the end of year finance and statistics. For some of you, this has been many times and probably know all the equity flows like we do are better than we do. For some people, it's very new. So, I tried to just kind of give a brief summary. Of the budget piece because I thought that might have some low hanging questions, but. Obviously, we're happy to do a deeper dive and specifics that people might have questions about. I feel like this. This budget wrapped up, you know, much more normally than than the past couple of years have it felt. At by the end of it, it felt sort of like a traditional budget year. You can see by the over and under of spending with. That there were times in the year where we were still buying more PPE or there were supply issues and things, but I feel like it did. To relax into itself by the end. I give huge credit to department heads. Some of them maybe you saw were sort of. And away from exact spendouts. And and I think that everybody sort of pulled together and made it work the best they could. So, any anybody have questions?
I I have. I have a question because there's something I don't. And not about this. I really appreciate the summary because it it shows, you know, where we were over and where we were under, but. So, in a few months, we'll approve the budget that you're going to. You put before city councils, right? Yeah, and then city council approves it. Arch or sometime? And so. Have we ever seen? I mean, did city council approve everything we asked for last year?
No. I would say it would be unusual for there to be an exact match of what we request and what is approved. Sometimes it's as nuanced as just moving resources from one line to another. So, the values are different, but the bottom line is the same. Other times they say, hey, we hear you saying that you need more money for that, but this isn't the year that we can grant it. And this year. This past year, coming into this year, they requested. That we be as flat as possible. So, I came in with a close to flat request. And there weren't like big gaugers to it, but there were there were some increases that weren't approved. And again, there were some lines moved around. I think the movement is mostly because the finance department is very new, the leadership has changed and they're. Revisioning out how they're gonna package the budget, but. Typically, we start the budget cycle with what they call a kickoff, and we just got the email this week scheduling that for the end of September. And that's kind of where Jeff gives an overview of. This is how I'm going to approach it if he starts to kind of give us those feelings like. Let me realize if it can take between a two and four percent increase or a flat or a. I think if we were gonna do that, we probably start to talk about it. And I don't know what to expect, I guess, looking at. Other agencies that are working on the next budget cycle, it wouldn't surprise me if we did another sort of flat year. There are some things we're just gonna have to advocate aggressively for. Children's program, for example, how those costs, we've used the same one for many years and so on. No, it doesn't look the same, but we haven't had anything too dramatic.
Okay, so we haven't actually, so we haven't seen. A twenty twenty-three budget. We the board, is that right? Or did we, and I? I either wasn't here or I was.
We do we give a document to the board and look how the request?
No, it it's okay. I this is a really long way to get at my question. So, that like this, the heating costs and the supplies and stuff that are quite a bit higher. They're not gonna go down, I would think.
The heating one is a good example, they kind of pick apart. So, when we went in last year to talk about the budget. We knew that was gonna be a big increase and we even kind of knew approximately, the energy company already said, we think it'll be an X percentage increase. So, we talked about that with the finance department. And sort of ran it as a normal number, knowing it was gonna go over and the feeling was sort of. If it gets too much to handle, we can do a budget amendment or the city might lead a cross departmental change. But those things. We will, you know, we have a list, kind of a running list of things that we we know we have to ask for more just because the copywork. So, worst case, not worst case scenario, they say that it had to be a completely flat budget. That would essentially be a reduction because of the increases in things like fuel.
Electricity.
Electricity and even some of the paper supply issue and things like that.
So, it sounds like, well, I read this as you sort of. Made things balance this year because you didn't travel because. As much and you held some positions for a little while, so does that mean? Positions will continue to be now?
I don't think so, and I wouldn't say that we have positions because of the budget. But holding position certainly helped us. We have a bit of that position since I've been here that we needed to. Intentionally kind of suppress that budget spending with personnel spending. That has been more sort of a. A bonus to for some other reason, holding a vacancy open. The other reality is since many of our legacy staff have retired. The holding of the vacancy to replace with a staff that will probably come in around the same level. Does not have the same power as. As the gap between the legacy staff and a new hire.
Okay, wow, those. I don't know, do anybody else have a budget comments?
I remember at one point you were concerned that. Us, things just weren't available to buy, that you needed to buy, but it looks like that kind of worked itself out pretty much.
I think it worked itself out. Some things we kind of got at the last minute, sometimes we found a vendor for. I can't think of anything that we. We ran into an issue that just weren't, we didn't get our hands on. It did sort of change the landscape of. What we bought when, but and some things. People just have really good wherewithal. Brad ordered three times a book stall to CD that one year because he heard there were a real year shortage. So, we just, we were able to not have to scramble to find it because somebody intentionally stocked it before. That doesn't mean that this coming year, there won't be new unexpected churns. I still think we're probably facing. Some of those issues, but hopefully at a smaller scale.
As someone who's new to this, I mean, it's brand new to me, I have to say this is an impressive. An impressive document. Because what it did, and I'm I'm a, I've been a long supporter of the library, but. It makes me realize what a great job is being done here to look at the list of people or groups that have used the. The the rooms here. It's an extraordinary list and and that provides such an important cultural. Avenue or venue for 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 this city. The I I don't quite know some of the language that's being used, but it's quite clear, there's a distinct outreach. To people in the community who might not ordinarily be the people who walk in here. Which is admirable and and it's quite clear, it comes through in this document. And there were there were a discerning number of other things. I thought I was kind of stunned by the number of reference requests. That they that had been fielded here in the age of Google. I mean, you know, why you'd think that would evaporate because people. Can find it themselves. Anyway, I've got some comments on particular things, but I just want to say that that's a. Document about the library, it's very heartening. I mean, whatever the budget is, it's very heartening because. The library is providing, is doing what it ought to be doing, which being a central resource. Cultural resource in the in the community.
That's, I appreciate hearing that, and I think. I always encourage staff to read these documents, the end of year documents as well, because it tells a story of. What everybody's work has come together to do. So, I I think that, but I appreciate hearing that and I'll share that.
Okay, are there? Yes, moving on, are there specific questions about the budget? That we have been given?
I I was interested in the the rate between new purchases. Of books. And withdrawn books. There's some, there's a balancing going on and it's a spatial problem, I suppose, as much as anything.
That's part of it.
And but I and this is probably trivial, but I I noticed that with. With fiction. There's a a much less draconian, I guess, withdrawal of. Of books than with nonfiction. And I guess they have a longer shelf life and that is to say though there maybe fiction is something that people look for for. A year or two or three years after a publication while a nonfiction book. It's comes and goes. I just, I I had no question about that. I just was interested. I mean, there are all kinds of things in here that fascinated me. In terms of the way in which decisions are made in the library.
And may want to address that. My guess is it's a difference in the type of material and how many copies.
There's a couple of things happening there. Our. Our fiction books actually are, it's far more draconian. We are limited, we remove fiction books at a higher rate than we do. If they're not, if they're not circulating. The stay on the shelf fiction book might have to circulate every eight months to a year. So, it's our fiction collection is pretty healthy. It's circulating quite quite well. Nonfiction, that's changing. People are using nonfiction differently. Oh, our collection of nonfiction books used to be how to manuals, say if you wanted to learn something, you go to that. We have all of these card manuals. Lots of things that you can find online pretty easily. That's changing. It's becoming much more narrative driven. So, a lot of those older books that people aren't using anymore because they're going online for those materials or that that information. That's kind of what's happening. So, in some cases, we issue a nonfiction book not to circulate two to three years before pulling it, just because if we didn't do that. The shelves stagnated.
Other comment, this doesn't require board action, man. No? Okay, let's move on then to the. Item B under four, which is the bylaws, the policy review of the board bylaws. You've had plenty of time to look at them and to read over the. Explanation of what we were trying to accomplish. Are there comments or questions or? Just want to vote?
I have a comment, our question, actually. And did I read it right that the the in camera meetings of the committee or the of the boards? With a person they're dealing with in the. In the institutional. Library is triggered by the person that's being examined.
Yeah, so in a personnel review, the person has to request a closed meeting. And the other criteria have to be met, but without that request, we can't.
So, the committee or the the trustees can't do that?
They can under special conditions. If there's a legal case going on, and their state code that does allow us to. But for a general personnel review, it would be requested by the employee.
The. Closed session thing, we sort of made a. Editorial decision not to try and list all the reasons. You can go into closed session because basically the reason this. Organization goes in the closed session is when we, the directors review. So, if you really want to know, you can go to the Iowa code that's referred to and there's probably those things we could.
And there are about half a dozen reasons why if you're going into a business transaction or a financial discussion, it needs to be private before an external offer is made. Then you're allowed to go into a session. So, for example, if you were to buy a piece of land. That might not be open session, but it's only includes. When to interfere with the actual business, the library to be open session that you would do this. But it's very specific.
Yeah, the policy really just reflects the code.
So, if Ellsworth wants it to be a public discussion, it's his prerogative.
Because our trustees and directors are conflicted and you may want it to be open. The employee may say, I want witnesses.
Other questions or comments?
I had one question about, let's see, I'm in Article six, section three, that addition about. One, the limitation of five minutes, which makes makes a decent amount of sense. I'm assuming that's one of the additions that was a reflection of what we heard from city council and following.
City council is actually three minutes, if I recall.
So, this is on the longer end for.
The curiosity I have has to do with trustees not being, cannot engage in discussion or debate during the public comment period. I think I understand the thrust of that, but I wanna I wanna make sure I understand that.
Well, and I I was reading this, it it what it means is you you can't. Well, I'm gonna use the example that happened. Once when I was here and there was a guy. He was on the sex offender list and he was petitioning to have access to. Meetings in the meeting rooms or programs being given in the meeting rooms and the board policy says he can't. So, he gave, he brought his lawyer and he gave quite an impassioned plea and you really wanted to like. You know, say, well, we'll look at it, but but you can't. So, basically, it's, I mean, I suppose if. The person were mumbling and said, well, said something and you didn't understand it, it wouldn't be out of order to say, could you, I didn't get that. Could you say it louder or something, but you can't. Explain to them why what they're asking for, we can't do.
Part of it is you have to adhere to a public agenda. More agenda and you're not allowed to do that. For the next meeting's agenda and you can ask for clarification.
Then it's on the agenda that it's more transparent.
Now, it's at the issue.
Okay, I will just stop for your point.
Anything else? Are we ready to make a motion to approve the bylaws, the revised bylaws?
So, moved, seconded.
All in favor? Okay.
So, it's a implementation question of when will these be made publicly? So that people who want to come and speak will know there have been.
Next one. Is nominating a finance committee. This is a new committee that. The board felt and Ellsworth felt, you know, perhaps it would be useful. I think you all got the information. I mean, I asked Ellsworth to clarify his expectations for what. What the committee would do and I said, I did send that out. So. My suggestion is that we we have a committee and then in June of next year. Revisit it and see if we like what the committee is doing, if it's helpful for Ellsworth, if it's. Too much work or if it's, we don't want to do it anymore. And then the board president in July could appoint a new committee. Won't be me, so. So, that's my suggestion that we do is that this come back to the agenda in June. As a discussion of whether we want to continue it or not. So, two people who sort of volunteered at the meeting last month, Claire and Noah. Indicated that they would be interested in in participating. No one else. Wanted to be involved, so I. I decided I I would go ahead and be a part of that committee. I don't think it necessarily takes. Three people, I think two would be enough. But I'm just sort of curious to see, see how it works. So, unless somebody complains about me being on the committee, that's my plan.
Standing up on every committee this year.
And I think. Not the director evaluation committee. What was I gonna say? My suggestion for the committee is that we somehow figure out how to coordinate it so that if we have communications with Ellsworth. He doesn't get three separate things that we sort of merge things and try and make it a little bit. So, it'll be interesting to see how it works. We're down to staff reports already. Ellsworth?
Only one thing to add, the most folks have questions, they did start the handrail exploration today, so. I don't know how long it probably will take, but I don't think it'll be super long, so it can progress. I'll take forward what's done and. Let folks know there's any, anything unusual that happens. Because the hardscaping was just redone. The possibility of finding, you know, big surprises underground is pretty slim, so I'm expecting.
But it's COVID era. Probably will happen.
So, that's good news. Otherwise, happy to answer your questions.
I was just gonna ask how often Fletcher comes?
Fletcher comes every other month. And we had an organ dog that was sort of, all libraries are up here using sort of the views dog. And when he went out of commission, there was sort of a pause and Fletcher's handler actually approached us and they came in one day to the business office and said. You know, we're we're just sort of making ourselves known. It ended up that Fletcher had the same, had to go onto the same training facility as the previous dog. And we thought, let's let's give him a chat. The first inspection, nothing was found, so we don't have a lot to judge on yet, but honestly, we kind of hope that's all.
Previously, have you had ones found by the dog or?
The dog is, the previous dog has hit on things. I don't know if they were manually discovered after it hit on them. Cause we usually that have work people come in and. Although maybe in a non book area once, it was it was before I got here.
Yeah, we had one of the major infestation of common people. Be the trained as they can sit on. But X stage as well as and then they get uncut.
And we obviously have a job in the morning while we're not open. And, you know, we don't have them tricks around in the middle of the public. They did offer that if we ever were concerned, they could come in strategically when public was here to see if it. I gotta look at any particular area of the door.
Would probably make a really interesting program.
But I didn't, I haven't met Fletcher yet.
Some dogs actually are trained to be diabetic service dogs, so they can detect low blood sugar down.
So, we completed interviews for the. Tom was able to come represent on the board to to watch the presentation part. Barbara Fadden came to represent on the Friends Foundation. And we. We have, we have not. I don't know if I can, it's only updates, but I will say that all of the files were exceptional to draw a really nice. Interview and presentation. We do have someone that we plan to pursue references. Tomorrow or Monday and. Work up those next steps. But really, really nice. Reverse set of experience and skills and we really appreciate it. Hope to be able to kind of pop in the middle of the day for days or in a couple weeks and.
That's very interesting and and I I just. Concur that for a strong candidate, so.
He was a great pull off. I think everybody here knows I was a little nervous about not knowing what. What it would look like and it was. Was stronger.
He's a titan, so.
It's gonna be an interesting one to onboard and to sort of acclimate to that position.
Okay. Any other questions for Ellsworth? Let's see, departmental reports, we've got children's and collection. Yes.
Yeah, yeah, what is the best?
So, waffle is like waffle iron? You know, there's a picture and I thought, well.
I will say I I had waffled. Peter tots from a food truck once, they were excellent.
I would think the smell would have been rather intense.
I'll add, it's, it was great having. Summer reading programs and activities back at a high level as, you know, having used the library a ton. In the before times, you know, we set a record with three activities in one day and that was, you know, that my kid wanted to do and we came down four separately, so. It's fantastic, very much appreciated.
Yeah, and I think she put it in there, but that. Like some of the bokeh ball terrarium. They had two or three sessions that day, five hundred kids.
Yeah, I was gonna say, we were in the library that day and we had to know about it and kind of set it back to, cause it went all the way up into the.
One of my kids went to that one and the product was a shockingly high quality. I mean, it was like a a real. Little terrarium with Pokemon and grass and.
For five hundred kids?
It was, I mean. It was much more than like a college kind of a thing. We were usually more thoughtful about putting the other of these. Lots of hot grills.
And that didn't burn that library down either.
We burned through it. We burned through it.
See Brad's services.
I'd say that the, the updates to in the children's library with the activity stations, the new kitchen. I was a little misty eyed when I came in and I saw the new kitchen because that was the one that was replaced was the one that was there when. I first started bringing my daughter here. Eighteen years ago. So it's like, oh man, end of an era. And then seeing the new, the new tunnel and the new alligator up on the wall like it's. Yeah, yeah, the beeping was a little. Yeah, I'm, I'm used to taking capacitors out of electronics at homes.
Um, and?
I do, I wrote optimistically that we were getting off the things in, but our main vendor Baker and Taylor announced this week that they were a bit of a ransomware attack. To ordering materials, receiving materials, sending the goods back. Invoicing materials and they have no idea when this is. Well, we have a secondary vendor that we're working through. So we're trying to get some orders through there, but.
Maybe like seriously, they have no idea if it'd be months or days or.
It seems from ransomware attacks, things come back pretty slowly. And so we'll see what, what the terms, they do not provide that. If we'll be able to meet them. Baker and Taylor was owned by Pollitt for a little while, a larger company. They just. It seemed as if they, that somebody. Their CEO bought the company, which kind of good news for us, but I feel bad that now that they. Made that leap and don't have a larger parent's. Collection.
That's terrible. It's terrible. It wasn't, obviously it was a very detailed report, but it was very informative. And it sounds like you're beginning to address the digital. Expense.
Yeah, that's gonna be our big project this year is figuring out how to balance. So much more budget going to ebooks and audio books when our circulation is starting to go down and how to maintain it backwards. And you're trying to. And you have to reorder those books every two years.
And content is available. Okay. Brent? Do you have any? Well, I always learn things from your reports and I, so I did learn something again about this battery thing. I had no idea.
And they're, and they're really.
They're really expensive.
Batteries are getting a lot more expensive lately, it's been in any.
It's not, it's not sexy or pretty or anything.
Lightning and use that as our.
Well, it seems like for that much money, you should get more than twenty or thirty minutes. Um, other comments for the.
One more. There were some questions raised about. A room downstairs that has some technology where it is. It is called the F O T room. That mean, I mean, it's the, yeah, fiber optic television, right? Yes.
That, yeah.
Yes, so it used to go with the. Yeah, I see. It hasn't been removed, but F O T room. Glamorous.
I, I did get a quick tour from Brad.
I thought. I guess that comes later in the agenda. Anything, anybody got some miscellany that they want to share?
Is this the time to discuss the email challenge that you want us to notice?
Well, I think we have refined, I think.
You're okay with it?
Okay. Okay, President's Report. Just a couple of things. I did meet with Jen and Ellsworth. About this. Quite elusive board. I don't know what it's called, Board Recognition Board. Retirement Board, anyway. It's. We're trying to come up with something. That would. Feel like it was worth people's while to come, that it would be sort of fun and celebratory. And also something that we could afford. And something that. Ideally could be held at a time. That would not. Require parents or whatever to stay late after a board meeting or something. We, we tossed around. Several ideas, you know, possibly. Possibly a brunch or, you know. After Saturday afternoon kind of thing. And various venues, we talked about the. Walker Homestead, but. It's really expensive, so that's not an option. Talked about the, what's the, what's the, the minory seat, that's Cedar Ridge place. Possibly Terry True Blood and we'd have something catered. Jen's also. On her list to call is the power company. So that's kind of what we're looking at is to have an event. That would be feel more. Festive and less obligatory, I guess, perfectly frank. But to put, to do this is gonna take some organization and planning and resume. My suggestion at this point is that we. We do it. In June and that that way. The retiring board members would be recognized and always by June, we know who the new board members are, so they could be rec, so it would. Check that box and then we could invite whoever else. You know. Board members who have been already gone for a decade. We haven't had a dinner apparently in three years, so it doesn't seem like we really have to have it in the next month. That's kind of the conclusion we came to. Okay. Also, you know. I'm very happy to take input from the. You know, the. Leadership staff that typically comes, you know, if it's Saturday afternoon or Sunday morning or not Sunday, but a brunch, for instance. Something like that would, would be acceptable in terms of their schedule rather than. Staying after a board meeting and finding a, a place. It's hard because these places that you can rent out. I mean, they, they went twenty five hundred dollars. Well. Unless you all really want to pay a lot for this dinner. So we're. We're working on it and when, I think when we have maybe one or two options, we can bring them back, but. Personally, I think the weather should be okay in June. It could be kind of more outdoorsy. Hopefully, we. You know, we sit here in these meetings with masks on. I don't know, and we're gonna get together and have dinner without masks. That seems a little bit. Weird, but. So. It's, we're working on it.
I think Terry True Blood would be an excellent option for, you know, city space and.
Right, and they, I don't think they charge us. You don't know yet. Still waiting here, I. Yeah, it's really nice. And so, and it's.
Fairly expensive, but that was also for. Weddings and events.
I think Ellsworth. At one, well, I, maybe I'm making this up, but I don't think so. At one point. I thought that the city had said that we could use it. Without paying a fee.
That'd be ideal.
So. We'll, we'll keep working on it.
We may have some kind of a rubric for that, reviewing what was training. We reviewed the other city facilities for strategic plan, community engagement. Without a fee, I don't know if this would be different or not, but. But we'll find out for certain.
Okay, so we're working on it. I don't really have anything else. I, I guess I'm gonna kind of piggyback on John's comments earlier about. How impressed he is with the library. I mean, I've lived in Iowa City for. Twenty, about twenty eight years now, I guess, but when I started as a board member. That first meeting, it was like. Wow, they do all this stuff that I don't know, cause I'm never young, anyway. I also. Just want to pass along kudos to, I mean, the staff. Here is amazing and I, I don't really spend a lot of time in the library, cause I reserve a lot of books and I run in and get them up and. Park out front and, and then I go. But one time I came in and there was a staff member. Sitting on the floor. The very hysterical lady. Who was clearly having a mental health. Crisis and the staff member sat there and just talked to her so calmly and. Lady wasn't calm and I went up to meet with Ellsworth and there's the staff member and this. Lady upstairs needing to do something with the computer and entering in some numbers or something. And. The lady said, I don't want to have an anxiety attack, I don't want to have an. She was clearly struggling and the staff member started reading off the numbers. One, two, three, and are you ready for, I was just so impressed with the. Calmness and the kindness of that staff person. I also, when I picked up another book. There was someone at the circ desk and she. Man, she talked really fast, but she clearly had two new university students who had come into the library to find out. You know, what their options were. And she got it all out, you know, I think by the time I left, I thought, man, they're just never gonna go to the university library, they're only gonna come here. They could check out seventy five books and it's never a problem to getting a studying room and I mean, she just did a sales job that would have made anybody proud. I don't know who she was, but. Anyway, you have a really, really good staff here. So that's my report. Announcements from members. Also listed an announcement, how's the first week of school going?
Well, I remembered to come to the meeting this, this year, which I did not last year. So far, so good. You got more of an adjustment, yeah.
Tech issues as always, cause they always roll something out on the last day of school. At, on June first, they rolled out new tech access, of course. Not as dramatic as last year's, but we're looking better. So far.
Committee reports, I. No, no report, no foundation. No. I'm not on it.
I know.
I'm sorry, don't worry, I need to look at. But he had a report last month, so.
The next meeting is in. September.
Maybe we'll have a new person. Communications. I was really impressed with Victoria's program. I thought, man, what a good idea. For a program, I, I, that was fascinating. We are, is incentive agenda. I need a motion to approve the agenda or if somebody wants discussion.
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favors? Okay. Oh, I didn't notice this before. I guess we really need to set the agenda for the September meeting. I didn't, I didn't notice that. Are there? Looks okay? Well, then I think. All right, with you, Ellsworth, you look like you're studying it. No? Okay. All right, in that case, I will adjourn the meeting. Thank you.
So A I M stand for of the people who are. In the city, but not, I, I, that's an acronym I couldn't figure out.
It's the school district using is their student ID number to access the library. Oh. Access to.